Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we call the roll, please?
Augustineelli?
Here.
Schmuckel?
Here.
McCumber?
Here.
Barchef?
Here.
McManus?
Here.
Corn?
Here.
And it's noted that Dool is absent and excused.
First item on our agenda is public comment. If there's any member of the public who would care to address the board, if you please come to the microphone and be so kind as to give us your name and address. All right, we will close public comment, come back to the board for statements of conflict of interest. Do we have any conflicts?
I believe I do. It would be 7B.
Agreed.
Agreed.
There are no other conflicts, I would look for review and approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented with trustee Barchef abstaining from discussion on 7B.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therfrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening you have minutes August 8th and August 13th, 2024, recommend approval. Bills from the general fund, $478,065.97. MTT update, receive and file. Consideration of contractors, change order number one to MOLON excavating for Silver Lake Road sewer extension, recommend approval. Consideration of contractor's application for final payment to MOLON excavating for Silver Lake Road sewer extension, recommend approval. Consideration of Northwest Silver Lake sanitary sewer extension, closeout internal documents, recommend approval. Introduction of proposed zoning ordinance amendment for the R3 zoning district and set public hearing for September 24th, 2024, recommend approval. Consideration of recommending approval of a continuing care retirement center liquor license for Oakley Village of Traverse City, resolution 2024-23-T, recommend approval. And consideration of budget amendment to increase community promotion economic development by $19,000, resolution 2024-24-T, recommend approval.
Is there any member of the board who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion? Molly?
3A and 3I. 3I.
3I. Any others? Does any member of the public who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Or staff? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items A and I.
So moved.
Support.
We have a move, motion and support. To approve the consent calendar with the exceptions of items A and I. Any questions or comments? Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Augustineelli?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Barchef?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. Next item is items removed from the consent calendar. Molly?
Okay, about three quarters of the way down our dialogue here on the special meeting of August 8th. The minutes say that we discussed the definition of structure. We did not discuss the definition of structure, we discussed the definition of beginning construction.
Yep.
Right.
So let's, let's make that change if everybody agrees.
Anybody disagree with that? Nope.
Now where is about three quarter?
About three quarters of the way down.
Start of construction.
Board members discussed the definition of...
Oh, okay.
Structure.
Structure.
We didn't, we didn't do structure. Okay. So do you want a motion to approve those minutes?
With that change, yes.
With that change? I'd make that motion.
I will support it.
We have a motion and support to approve the minutes with the change discussed. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, then 3I, I just wanted to be clear on what this is for. We're amending the budget, we're putting $19,000 in there, is that to pay the Travers Connect?
Yes.
Yes, so there was only $1,000 in the budget for economic development and I received a bill for $20,000 that was approved at the previous board meeting and I said, hmm, we don't have enough money to pay it. So we need to do a budget amendment.
Just wanted to make sure I knew what it was for. Okay, thanks. Then I would make the motion that we adopt resolution 2024-24T.
Support.
We have a motion and support to adopt resolution 2024-24-T. Are there any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Augustineelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Barchef?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
And Corn?
Yes. Motion passes. We have no correspondence, we'll move right on to reports. Our MMR rep could not be here tonight, she is at a conference. But she promised to come twice next time.[413.02][413.02](Laughter). Now the Grand Traverse County Commissioners report.
That's wishful thinking there supervisor. Brad Yu, Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioner, Vice Chair District 4. At a meeting last week, we did vote to approve $150,000 of funding to pine rest for, so they can put towards hiring other children, child counselor. We also hired a owner's rep for what is referred to as Project Alpha at the county. That will consist of a new 911 center, a new EOC, which is the Emergency Operations Center, and a new storage facility. So we did hire the owner's rep, we have not gone beyond that, so the owner's rep is going to be working with administration. In fact, they already started in figuring out the next step and everything, so. We do have a study session tomorrow on budget, that starts at 9:00 AM if anybody's interested. And also today I found out as we were walking in here, as I was walking in here, we did close on the Camp Gerlach property today at about quarter after 3:00, so. That's all I have on the list for now. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Awesome. One more thing I do want to add on cyber, on the cyber incident, we are pretty much fully functional, there are just a couple little stragglers there that they're still working to get bits and pieces online and everything, so. But for the most part, we are not 100%, but we're probably 99% I would say. So as we get on board and get to be 100% throughout the county again, I'll update you guys on that, so. Great. Well, with that being said, I'll stick around until closed session, but if anybody has any questions or comments, my contact information is on the county website. Like always, feel free to reach out to me and we will go from there. Thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Next item is the Grand Traverse County Road Commission report, and I don't see a road commissioner here.
Well, come on now, they're supposed to be here.
Pretty sure Karen talked to them, they said they were, so maybe something happened.
Probably all the, all the wires and trees down right now.
That might be it. On the supervisor's report, the Board of Public Works meeting, our last meeting, was canceled because we lost our EPW director, John Debozzo. 55, heart attack. So met with the county administration, some of the staff at the Department of Public Works, and Jeff Shaw, who's the chair of the Board of Public Works, to start putting things together in a new way. And we moved the meeting, that canceled meeting, to two days from now, Thursday. So we are, we met with the county, the city, a number of other townships, and the Chamber of Commerce slash Travers Connect on this economic development proposal that we've been playing with for a while, and they're trying to, trying to get everybody on the same page in terms of terms and zoning, which is, I think, a little more difficult than they believe it is, but we'll let John handle that.
John at the rescue.
Also had another discussion with Trevor and his crew, who are very eager to get Ironman 2025 a acceptable plan. And they are wanting very badly to come in and out on Cass Road. That means closing Cass Road, and in particular the intersection of Cass and South Airport for six hours on a Sunday.
No.[669.32][669.32](Laughter).
So I asked the road commission for the traffic report on that intersection from the last Sunday in August last year, and over 50,000 cars go through that intersection on a Sunday in August. I, I think going out in the morning it might work, but I think they need to find another way back into town.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a big, huge economic thing, because that's like when the season starts to tail off and there's a lot of empty rooms, and it'd be great for the area, but it, our emergency manager's not thrilled with the idea.
Closing that main intersection's crazy.
I mean, they would open it for an emergency, you know, hold the race up, but people would be stacked up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's bad now, can you imagine that?
So that is your supervisor's report. Unless there are any questions, we'll move on to unfinished business. And first is consideration of bids for carpet and floor cleaning for the Garfield Township office.
Hello, Derek Morton. I'm here to answer any questions. I can, you got the background, sorry I missed that last meeting. An unexpected trip up to Houghton, get the daughter all tucked in, so. Our current cleaning crew is contemporary, right? They did a great job on the tile cleaning last year, and before that, before Derek was the township, I don't know when it was cleaned before that, and they did a great job and it's holding up. Speaking with Modernistic and Stanley Steamer, their bids were a little higher than contemporary for the tile cleaning. They use some bigger machines, and sometimes that's not always the best way to do it, maybe getting a little elbow grease in there. Talking to our contemporary cleaning crew, they can get into the corners and that kind of stuff and get really a detailed cleaning. From the three, none of them really pushed the grout ceiling, like it's going to be beneficial if we do do the tile cleaning once a year, once every other year as needed. We do, it's high traffic at times, but I think with a good cleaning every once a year or even every other year with the tile, it'll hold up. Should we stop there and discuss some tile cleaning, or we want to go into the carpet? I know there was some review in the meeting last time I watched, there were some questions, like happy to answer on tile first if you want.
I have a question. This thing we got tonight?
Yep.
About the grout ceiling?
Yeah.
So we would purchase that and they would put it down?
They would, if we...
Their, their recommendation was do not do the grout ceiling.
Oh, really?
Yes.
But I said, just in case the board demands it.
Why is that?
They said it makes little or no difference. The last time they did it was almost two years ago, and it's...
And they didn't use grout ceiling then?
Nope. Nope.
Well.
Yeah, there might be a difference.
I'm not a contractor, but I stay with one once in a while.[865.43][865.43](Laughter). Grout ceiling, I, you don't have to do it every year, but you should do it some, some.
Yeah.
You know, if you do it every other year, it's okay, but never, you don't want to never seal that grout.
Well, as far as I can tell, it's not been sealed in the 20 years we've been here.
Well, you don't know if it was sealed when they put it in. I'm sure it was.
Well, it might have been cleaned.
Well, they, they didn't, so Modernistic and Stanley both did a test on a corner, and they don't see any ceiling that's down on the tile right now at all.
Okay. And you're happy with the color and...
Yeah.
Yeah, it was almost two years ago they did it last, and it's holding up very well.
Worried about it. I, just a question on there, so it looks to me like in their first bid that's here, they've got steam clean, is that next word reseal?
Rinced.
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 And allowed to dry.
Okay. All right.
The only reason I can read these is because I took script writing in college.[942.43][942.43](Laughter).
I'm glad, I'm glad you could read it.
I would make a motion that we go with contemporary cleaning for the, excuse me, tile cleaning.
Do you want with or without that seal?
Without.
And do we want to do it just as needed, or once a year, and are we looking, I think as needed is fine. Like I don't, right now, I, my recommendation, talking to staff that's here all the time, does it need it this year? Probably not. Will, will it need it next year, going in, coming out of winter with the salt that gets tracked in? Probably. So do we want to make that decision whether we do it this year or we do it as needed in the spring?
Can we do it in the spring of every year because of the salt and everything?
If it's necessary, yeah, I think so. But I like, I like the term as needed.
Okay.
As needed, then we can, I mean, it's only 300 bucks from these guys to do it, so we can purchase it from them at that time.
There we go. So is that a second?
Yes.[1018.93][1018.93](Laughter).
Of course.
We have a motion and a second. Go with contemporary cleaning as needed on the tile. Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Augustineelli?
Yes.
Barchef?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
And Corn?
Yes.
Okay, so the carpet, our cleaning crew feels like that's not their expertise, so they didn't want to supply a bid. Modernistic was the lowest on every step, whether it's annual, semiannual, quarterly. This first go around, it's going to take a little bit, there's stains up here, there's stains in some offices, so this first go around, I don't know if we want it, you know, yearly on the carpet cleaning. I think after this first go around, to see how they can go, once again, they'll do it as needed yearly or semiannual. So Stanley Steamer wasn't included in this package, they're, they're higher on both the tile and the carpet. So I think we'd recommend Modernistic for at least once a year carpet cleaning, if you guys are okay with that.
I have a question on this. Semiannual is $1,297, but annual is $1,437. It doesn't seem right to me, because if we do semiannual and do it twice, that's $24, $2,500, and annual is only $1,439.
They're giving us a break for additional cleanings, because I think this first one, I mean, like especially up here, there's a lot of stains they're going to probably be working on. So if we do, like let's say two cleanings a year, that second cleaning's probably not going to be as labor intensive to get stains out and that kind of thing. That's why they're giving us a break.
Twice, it's going to be $2,600.
Right.
But if we do an annual, it's only $1,500. That's why I was just sort of confused on that.
Oh, yeah, they're just giving us a break.
Because we're doing it twice a year?
Yeah, and it won't be as much, I think, they won't be in here as long.
They will the first time, though.
Yeah, the first time's going to be rough.[1158.83][1158.83](Laughter).
I'm reading the bid, and the bid doesn't say twice a year on the $1,439.26 that I can see. Somebody else can point that out to me, it's handwritten on here.
At the bottom it says annual just to...
Annual, I mean, somebody, somebody wrote that on there?
I believe that was Karen, yes.
And, and are we, I mean, each, it's very specific, one time for the first floor carpet cleaning at $636, and one time, they, they have quantities listed here, they don't have two on them, so. Because our staff wrote annual on there, we're going to just take that that way and...
It was...
It was in an email, that's how the quote came through. I don't know why they don't have it on their face sheet, but that's, semiannual is the break we get for $1,297, annual is $1,439.
If you guys are happy with that, without having it written.
Yeah, I, I would be comfortable with annual, I think.
Annual even, you have an accompanying email that says it's twice a year?
Yes, both Karen and I do.
Okay.
So that is what semiannual, that's why she put that on there?
Yes.
Chris has a question.
Chris?
I think if we go with the annual when the description fits, says one time, so I think that's the one that we should go with.
We have a motion.
If we go with the semiannual one, then I'd want them to change it, but...
We have a motion from Barchef, do we have a second?
I want to see a semiannual. Do you think semiannual is good?
I think, I think in the spring one time a year, till we see how it goes with them, I think, I think it'd be fine.
Okay, all right. I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second.
I have to talk to Derek.
For annual carpet and plank flooring cleaning from Modernistic. Are there any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Barchef?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Augustineelli?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks Derek.
Thank you for cleaning it all up.
Last item on our agenda tonight is discussion of the applicants for the township manager. And this will go into a closed session in order to maintain the confidentiality of those who don't want their names released until they're considered for application. And I would like a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss the applicants for township manager.
Support.
We have a motion and support. And we do need two thirds, so.
Chris? Yeah, vote.
Chris is not going to vote. So we'll have a roll call vote from the other five.
Augustineelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
And Corn?
Yes. And since this might be a while, and is there anyone who would like to make public comment at this point in time? All right?
We may not be back.[1374.03][1374.03](Laughter).
We all may run away.
We will go into closed session at 6:23.
Are you guys waiting for the liquor license?
Are you guys waiting for the liquor license?
Back in open session?
I think you have to make that motion.
Make the motion that we come out of closed session.
Support.
We have motion and support to come out of closed session at 6:57. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
I would like to make a motion that we interview four candidates on September 5th for the Township Manager position. At 1:00 PM starting, that will be public.
All right.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a meeting.
I have other business, just real quickly.
Yes, yes.
I talked to John Syke when I got here today because I was a little upset with an article in the paper about the homeless, that they're looking at places in Garfield Township to build.
They are.
And he said, "Nobody has come to him." He said, "I don't know where they're getting the information," or anything like that, "but nobody has come to him and said, 'We want to put this in there.'"
You've had some discussions out in the community, haven't you? People who want to buy a piece of ground and...
Yes. But not with the people who are making the plan. But it's a... The piece of property they're discussing is totally inappropriate.
Correct. Yeah, but I mean, it's just, you know, it's upsetting because I've had people contacting me as a board member and say, "What do... I don't want this homeless place in Garfield Township." And I said, "I don't think it's in stone. I don't even know if anybody has even contacted our planning department or anything like that." And John said, "No, they hadn't."
No.
So I just want to make sure that people know that it hasn't been approached to us yet.
Correct.
I think it's just being played out in the public first.
Yeah, and then the other thing I want to say is a great article on the Trailhead. That was really nice, by Copperidge. That was very, very nice.
Bye, Jim.
All right. Any other business to come before the board?